Good evening. I want to welcome everyone to City Council Chambers for a public hearing of the Small and Minority Business Committee. Certainly before we get started, we would like to add our prayers for the victims of the attack earlier this morning at Ohio State University, praying for those who are healing now throughout our city, for the families, for the OSU community, and for the city of Columbus at large. Also, I'd like to add our gratitude for the first responders who undoubtedly saved lives this morning. Without those folks who, we always say, run towards violence, we would be dealing with deaths, not folks who are recovering, and for that, we are extremely grateful. Like I said, thank you so much for being here at this public hearing. We're really excited about the conversation that we're going to have this evening, the legislation on changes to Title 39. We sit here today discussing how to empower the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. Because of a coordinated effort by the city, Mayor Gunther's first act in office was to name Steve Francis as the city's first-ever Chief Diversity Officer. Chief Diversity Officer, the cabinet-level position designed to work internally and externally to make Columbus, the city of Columbus, and the businesses we contract with reflect the rich diversity of our city. I want to acknowledge the leadership that Mayor Gunther demonstrated by making this his very first act in office. He has been a strong proponent of inclusion at the city level and is truly leading by example. Tonight, we take another step forward as we discuss this legislation that would empower Director Francis in his office to take on new responsibilities and lay the foundation for future efforts. I certainly want to thank Director Francis and his staff for being here this evening, but for the many hours and days and weeks of work that went into pulling this legislation together, and actually, the other departments and other folks around the city that contributed to this legislation. The intention of this hearing is to review the Ordinance 3025-2016, which appeared on the council agenda November 21st in the Rules and Reference Committee and was tabled pending this hearing. Ordinance 3025-2016 is a change to Title 39 of the Columbus City Code. Title 39 governs the structure and operation of the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. This office, established by the leadership of Mayor Gunther and Chief Francis, aims to better manage minority contracting and workforce diversity for the city of Columbus. If you have not received a hard copy summary of these changes, my staff has additional copies that can be brought around if you need one. If not, I'm going to turn the floor over to Chief Francis, who will lay out the proposed changes put forth to Ordinance 3025-2016.
Thank you, Chair Harden. And just let me reiterate, it was, in fact, a team effort from several departments in the mayor's office and your office in helping to clean up Title 39 to a form that we could work with going forward. We wanted to be a platform from which to build on after we received the results of the disparity study, which will call, we assume, for further revisions to Title 39 in a way that will further advance the efforts of our office and the city of Columbus to bring equal opportunity to supplier provision of goods and services to the city of Columbus. I wanted to give a summary of some of the significant or substantive changes of these revisions. In large part, it is a massive change of the name of the office from the Equal Business Opportunity Commission to the Office of Diversity and Inclusion. The Office of Diversity and Inclusion is a bit more expansive than the former Equal Business Opportunity Commission. The Office of Diversity and Inclusion focuses on workforce diversity for employment within the city and building workforce pipelines to help industries that are underutilized with diverse talent, including police and fire and construction trades, et cetera. It also focuses on formalizing formal equal business opportunity and to supplier diversity in general. We have an outreach pillar to the office that supports the Department of Neighborhoods and Community Relations Commission in outreach and building and sustaining relationships with diverse community organizations and diverse leadership. And we have a commitment and communications pillar, which I'm proud to say has established the first-ever cross-functional diversity committee within the city of Columbus to help measure and keep on track with goals that we set to achieve in the area of diversity and inclusion. But specifically, the changes that I wanted to summarize, establish a program that helps businesses receive financial assistance or access to capital, and we're calling it the Business Opportunity Assessment Program. And we try to assess where a business stands and how they need help most to position them in the best light to get business opportunities with the city of Columbus. And we found that the overwhelming barrier to those opportunities are access to financing and capital, or assets and equipment. And we have a partnership with the Department of Development that's going to help us, we believe, make some very significant changes that will help the business community. We have changed the definition of what is considered a minority business enterprise, and thus, we have expanded the definition of minority group members from what formerly was just African-American because of the previous disparity study, which identified an overwhelming disparity among African-American businesses. So we followed the guidance of the study back then, over 12, 13 years ago. So it's been quite a while since the study has been performed. But we felt that the EEOC, the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission of the United States, has a much more expansive definition of minority groups, and it includes Hispanics, Asians, and Native Americans, along with African-Americans. So we wanted to be in accordance with the standard definition of what a minority group is. Certainly, we rely on the EEOC to enforce employment discrimination issues, and we think those same guidelines should apply to supplier diversity enforcement. We also changed female business enterprise to what is more commonly accepted as women's business enterprise. And the golden rule in diversity is, you ask those who you represent what they would like to be, you know, how they would like to be referred to, and the overwhelming sentiment was that they prefer women business enterprise versus female business enterprise. So we made that change. Nothing substantively was changed, other than the acronym and the word, women versus female. Then, we established the workforce diversity component of the office with a specific section that recognized our ability to promote and expand workforce diversity within the city of Columbus. And we're going to help manage that through this cross-functional diversity committee that I spoke of, and of course, under the guidance and counsel of the city attorney for the city of Columbus. The reality is that the city has operated without a goals-based program for more than a decade, but the code did not reflect these changes. In fact, they had two separate duplicate parts of the code that repeated the same verbiage for goods and services as they did for construction. So we went from a 48-page statute to maybe a 16- or 17-page statute, eliminating all the duplicative language and redundant language. And so we combined goods and services and construction and gave the same language treatment to it. Again, if the disparity study warrants us to separate it, we'll probably separate it with some specific sections and not repeat the same thing twice for efficiency purposes. But we will follow the guidance of the disparity study as it is issued. I think that, for the most part, those are the significant changes. There were a few other minor changes that we believe helps the supplier by being more user-friendly. One example is, we expanded the certification period from two years to three years. So after getting certified to do business with the city as a diverse supplier, you only have to recertify every three years instead of every two years. We all know that the small and emerging business owner has a lot more to do than keep up with deadlines to recertify every two years, and it just eliminates another duplicative paperwork requirement of a company that has more important things to focus on. And we believe the privilege of being able to do business with the city should be extended to three years instead of two. You know, we also added some things to good faith effort that allowed our office to be the last stop to determine how good the effort is of the prime or the general contractor to find subs that are diverse. So that last effort is to contact our office, and we're going to do our level best to try whatever that prime may not have thought of as a last attempt to have a good faith effort to find a diverse subcontractor. We also cross-referenced Title 329, which is the part of the code that governs purchasing and financing management. And we wanted to give full deference to them to make sure that any actions we took were in compliance with purchasing guidelines and that they could help us, help inform us as we make any final determinations. So, again, it was a very collaborative effort. We think that we have a very good product that's a baseline for further improvement in the future after the disparity study is issued. So I'll be glad to answer any questions or entertain any comments.
Thank you, Chief Francis, for the overview. Just following your presentation, one of the things that stood out to me was that 3025 will give ODI the authority to establish new guidelines and programs to advance supplier and workforce diversity as it pertains to some of our departments, including police and fire. That perked my interest. That's something, when we started talking about this, that I know that you had a lot of interest in. How do you see that being implemented? Like, how do you see that playing out as your office will engage?
Yes, Chairman Harden. We, one of the first charges that the mayor gave me was to try to diversify police and fire, for obvious reasons. It's good to reflect the diversity of the communities that you protect and serve, and so we wanted to bring that back in the truest sense. But that's, it's been a very collaborative process that is going to require a lot of hard work, but it's our job to, and we already have our workforce diversity manager, Randall Sistrunk, working on strategies to get grant funds to help us hire more police officers with a focus on diversifying the force. We have efforts afoot to build pipelines and see where we can improve the ability of applicants to address the civil service process in ways that are fair and just. We want to eliminate barriers. We know that there are certain drop-offs of diverse candidates when they apply, and we want to look closely at those drop-off points to see if we can't have a safety net to catch folks when they drop off, to give them an equal opportunity to apply for these police and fire jobs. We're going to use some innovative programs that work across the country, in California, and Florida, and in other cities that have done some innovative things. So we're going to try a number of different things under our workforce diversity authority to try to help that cause, while also trying to dissipate the tension between community and police as we continue to experience unfortunate incidents like what we've experienced here recently in Columbus.
Thank you. One of the changes of going from the Equal Business Office and Commission to the Office of Diversity and Inclusion is moving away from a commission-style governance to your establishment, being established as a director or as another department. So how are we doing the change? I know we have talked about this cross-functional diversity committee. What is that? How does one get on that? What will their function, what will their authority be versus the former commission style?
Yeah, and I think that the two are somewhat different, but they're somewhat the same. And by that, I mean, the diversity committee is internal, and it is comprised of the directors themselves who report directly to the mayor. And so the mayor has told them countless times already that he will hold each director personally accountable for achieving the goals that we set as a committee. Each director from each department has appointed representatives that are close to the daily work of purchasing for the supplier diversity initiatives and close to the work of hiring and recruiting for purposes of workforce diversity and advancing those goals. We may measure other things as a committee, such as diversity training, or implicit bias training, or cultural competency training, anything that the committee feels it needs to address to improve the city's diversity and inclusion proficiency. On the other hand, instead of a commission, we now have an advisory council for the Office of Diversity and Inclusion, and that is another new feature that's slightly different from the Equal Business Opportunity Commission. The commission had members appointed by the mayor. This advisory council will also have members appointed by the mayor, up to seven. And we have provided that there can be up to two from the minority or female business community appointed. So in the spirit of inclusion, I think it's very important to have an inclusive voice from the outside that helps inform the Office of Diversity and Inclusion on the policy that we develop. Not that those external business owners will be directing policy, but we will listen closely to what they believe are non-user-friendly processes and procedures, barriers to opportunity. We need their information as we develop our policy on an annual basis. So I don't think that the old commission was very active. We want this advisory council to be active to at least meet once a year, to help us review things, to make sure we're doing the best we can.
Thank you. Before I go to public speakers, and I also would still like to open it up if folks have questions and would like to speak, you can still sign up to speak up until we run out of speakers. My last question, though, is around the expansion of the codified eligibility standards and those terms. One of the questions that we've received, even phone calls, about was, you know, there are already Latino-American, Asian-American, Native American businesses are already designated as MBEs. How does this expansion, how will this expansion work, and how will this expansion affect other minority classes? Will there be adverse effects? I know there are folks that have strong concerns about this.
That's a good question, Chairman Harden. And the fundamental principle of diversity and inclusion, it is that it is not an either-or. That is, nobody gains at the expense of another, theoretically. What diversity and inclusion is, is an "and" proposition. We bring more people in to participate in the process. I think Reverend Jesse Jackson once said that "we never knew how good baseball could be until everybody could play." The same applies to golf, which was, as you know, an exclusive country club sport, and until everybody had a chance to show their ability, we didn't know how good that sport could be, on and on. So our theory here is, the more, the better. Competition is good across the board. It makes people better at what they do. It sharpens their tools. But we believe that none of these changes will be at the expense of any minority group. We believe that it will be providing an equal opportunity for more groups. I think it's no secret that folks who have been recently elected to the highest office of this country have very specific thoughts and ideas about people that look different from them. And so we want to address that onslaught by opening up the tent wider to give a lot of people opportunity that didn't have it before. One thing is clear, that the disparity study will guide our actions and will guide our further revisions to the statute. It could find no disparity, and so things would remain the same. It could find a disparity in a certain race or gender, and we will follow that guidance. But again, we won't say that because there is a disparity in African-Americans, we won't give any business to Hispanic businesses. It will be based on the best supplier that can provide the goods and services. But we will achieve our goals to try to eliminate the disparity. That will be a priority.
Thank you. I guess I did say the last question was my last question, but I chair the committee, so I guess I have the, I'm able to ask one more question. Would you just lay out the framework for the disparity study? Just give us a high-level overview again, timeline, when we expect to start seeing information come back, just so folks can understand again one more time.
Absolutely. On this Thursday and Friday, December 1st and 2nd, we will conduct live interviews of the four finalists out of the proposals that were received. The evaluation committee will then work quickly to score based on that live interview and select a finalist who will be offered the contract. Our hope is to get that contractor in place as soon as possible, because on average, the disparity study process takes 12 months. If you're lucky, you can get it in shorter time. But it involves detailed analysis and research in various industries of various companies that are owned by different ethnicity groups and different gender backgrounds. And it takes a deep dive into the city of Columbus' contracting practices. And there's a lot of empirical data, and there's a lot of anecdotal data that's collected by focus groups and live interviews over an extended period of time. And the region is what they call the metropolitan statistical area, which in our central Ohio area is about a seven or eight-county area. So that's a lot of ground to cover, a lot of businesses to research and evaluate, and a lot of different purchasing practices of city departments to analyze. And so the study will come back. We will receive the results, and we will have another public hearing on those results so that the business community can come out and hear from that contractor directly on how they conducted the study, what their findings were, and what their recommendations are, that we, again, will follow very closely.
Thank you. With that, we will move to the public speaker portion of tonight's public hearing. I would like to first call Mr. Dan Moncrief. Would you please state your full name, address, and any groups that you represent?
Yes, sir.
And thank you for coming out this evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, and good evening, Mr. Director of the ODI. My name's Dan Moncrief. I'm here as a concerned citizen, first of all, but I would also like to mention that I'm chairman and CEO of McDaniel's Construction Corp. I am also a national board member for the National Association of Minority Contractors. I commend the Office of ODI and this committee for the work effort put into these changes. Generally, I think overall, they're all good. I have one exception, and that's the one that was previously, just recently, discussed. Judge Graham was in town this past Saturday, and he gave a dissertation about why he knocked down House Bowl 584. Two of the things that he mentioned is that a lack of narrow tailoring and strict scrutiny on behalf of the administering governmental body, which was the state of Ohio. If, in fact, we expand the city of Columbus MBE to include the classes of individuals that I see stated here, I think we may taint that strict scrutiny and narrow tailoring. I think it'd be, in my opinion, a better course of action to wait till after the disparity study, see what the data says, and then think about including other people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moncrief. Chief, to that very last question, is there a simple or a short answer to why we wouldn't wait to make that change in terms of the inclusion until we receive the feedback?
Yeah, I think, simply put, right now, there are no goals. And so the department directors are voluntarily imposing what they would like to see as diverse goals, diverse participation goals on the contracts that they issue. So right now, there's nothing. Our office is internally tracking ethnic groups that receive contracts. And so we have our finger on the pulse of who's getting the contracts, and we have a fairly good idea of an imbalance that we're seeing. But Judge Graham is right, it has to be narrowly tailored. And so we will defer to that narrowly tailored study. In the RFP, we put all the case law that are in the line of cases that Judge Graham has decided or has sprung from his decisions in Crowson and AGC, et cetera. So the contractor knows that this study has to be legal-proof, and it has to be very strictly, narrowly tailored so that it can withstand legal challenge. And so, in fact, to address Mr. Moncrief's concern, the expansion of the definition of minority groups does not prevent us from revising the statute to focus on a certain diverse group that is identified from the study to try to eliminate the disparity. That is just a definition, and so the goal can still be specifically addressed to that organization, I'm sorry, that ethnic group that is determined to be out of balance or to have a disparity.
So in the end, the disparity study will dictate where we go in terms of our numbers and setting those potential goals?
Yes. I think the revision was just to be in line with federal law and to set a foundation for... foundation for focusing intentionally on the group that is identified to have a disparity.
Thank you. Next, we will have Ms. Dani Palmore. Would you please come and state your name and any group, or your address and any group you may represent?
My name is Dani Palmore. My company is PolicyWorks. We specialize in community outreach, and we do also public education. First of all, I want to say that I want to commend you, Councilman Harden, to Director Francis, and also to Mayor Andy Ginther for his commitment to this. There's been a lot of word and mouth lip service, but this is the first time in about a year that I have actually seen the results of what the mayor's challenge has been and your commitment, Councilman Harden, to this process. I've had an opportunity to review some of the information, but probably, and I understand that the more we include people, the better we get. My only concern, or my biggest concern, is with contractors themselves. This is supposed to be diversity and inclusion. And to me, that means everyone. In other words, a contractor could literally be allowed to pick one when there could be opportunities for them to pick two or three at one time. So, that second point, which I didn't bring my sheet up with me, it shows that the Office of Diversity and Inclusion has the opportunity to put together guidelines and initiatives to make sure it doesn't become, okay, we've hired one, we don't have to do it anymore. And that is probably my biggest concern, but all of you have done a great job on it. The other thing that I didn't see in this particular instance is the opportunity and the necessity of monitoring the MBEs in terms of the utilization, and also, when MBEs do the work, do they do the work that's in the scope, and do they get paid for what they're in the scope for? So, I would like to see that included in what it is that we move forward with. But again, I want to thank you for what you've done.
Thank you, Ms. Palmore, for your comments. Would you, Chief, speak to, first, that last point that Ms. Palmore made about, how do we get to the teeth of monitoring? Is it the disparity study and the following up to make sure that not only are contractors awarding the contracts, but they're actually following through and spending down the money on those contracts for our minority, small minority businesses? I hear that time and time again from folks who are out there that they will be named on the contract, but that's where it ends. How do we get to those teeth? Is it the disparity study?
Well, we know those realities as well, and in fact, it's not the award that we focus on, it is the payment. And so, we will be tracking payments. We're going to make sure that our utilization tracking database is specifically focused on payments. And we will be participating in pre-bid meetings, in the evaluation team meetings, where there is a likelihood of a minority firm bidding. One change that I didn't mention, which we think is fairly significant, is in Section 3907.04, under the criminal sanctions section. And what we did there was we added a provision that is, again, in line with the provisions in the general purchasing title of Title 329, but we wanted to put that also in Title 39. And that means if a general or prime contractor is fraudulent or misrepresents or fails to disclose or any kind of trickery or skullduggery or, you know, hoodwinking, whatever you want to call it, they could be subject to being permanently debarred from doing work with the city of Columbus. Now, the only criminal sanction is a misdemeanor and a $1,000 fine, so we wanted to put a lot more teeth in it than that, and we wanted them to realize that if you misrepresent or if you put a list of subs on your list in the beginning and it doesn't pan out that way, you may be subjecting yourself to being permanently debarred from doing work with the city. So, we think that will open their eyes and get their attention. Another thing that I've told the mayor, and he supports this, is as many staff as we need to hire to attend these pre-bid meetings and these evaluation team meetings and to help in monitoring these contracts, that's what we need to hire. So, we have the ability to grow our staff to get the type of manpower, woman power we need to properly monitor and police these contracts the way they should be. We've also looked at some best practices in other cities, like Dayton and other places, where they have a lot more stringent, you know, requirements in their statute. And again, the mayor says that between now and the time that this study comes out, he's not just going to sit around and wait for the study to come back, he's going to implement further measures to help ensure that there is equal opportunity. And we've already talked about unbundling larger contracts into smaller size contracts. We've talked about, you know, again, getting financial assistance and access to capital, because ultimately, it's going to be my office, the responsibility of my office and the responsibility of the business community to scale up their business so that we won't hear the excuse, well, they just weren't of scale, or they didn't have the experience, or they didn't have the capacity to take on this work. We'd love to give them the contract, but, so we don't want to hear that. So, it's going to be hard work on both sides of the fence to make sure that we close some of these doors that have been, you know, opening up as excuses to why we can't give these diverse suppliers an opportunity.
Thank you. The next speaker that I'll call up is Ms. Deanna Barnett. Would you please state your name, address, and any organization that you represent?
Thank you, Chair Harden. My name's Deanna Barnett, Executive Director of Increased CDC, also known as Increased Community Development Corporation. We are a faith-based nonprofit organization located on the northeast side of Columbus, and we offer business training, consulting, coaching, and microloans up to $15,000 for new and emerging entrepreneurs in our city. About 95% of our clientele are African-Americans, and 68% are women. We also host the Micro Entrepreneur of the Year Awards, where we recognize business owners with five or fewer employees in our city, and they are demonstrating success, and they have involvement in their communities. Last year, I had the opportunity to speak with each award recipient, and most, if not all, were women-owned businesses or minority businesses. And they shared a consistent challenge as an MBE or WBE, and that was the bidding and contracting process, or finding ways to be a subcontractor with opportunities with the city. Access to capital has been a challenge as well, and we can assist with financing, but only so far. And so, my question to Chief Francis is, what plans are in place, or how do we, how do you plan to work with supporting agencies like Increased CDC to propel minority businesses forward in the next year?
Thank you, Ms. Barnett. First, I want to thank you for the work that you do, and certainly the work Increase does in our community in providing those entryways in for many small businesses. I think you're out there doing God's work. I really appreciate your organization and what you're doing out there. One of the things that, just before Chief Francis speaks, when we spoke, one of the things that I want us to follow up on is, as a part of some of your interest, your trainings that you do, including our certification, the city certification, in your training processes, so that we can streamline that, so folks going through your processes can automatically be in line to be certified as a vendor with the city of Columbus, I think is a first step that we would like to get to. And then, Chief Francis.
Well, thanks, Ms. Barnett, for that question. And based on the statistics you provided, you serve the sweet spot of what our office and our supplier diversity function is intended to support. I didn't realize your numbers were that high in terms of serving African-Americans and then women. Ironically, we've been talking with the Department of Development, with the city, who already has a relationship with Increased CDC. And because of the nature of the microloans that CDC focuses on, the $15,000 range, we want to try to enhance their involvement in this Business Opportunity Assessment Program to meet some of our newly certified businesses with those types of infusion of microresources that can make a huge difference for them in terms of just getting on the playing field versus, let alone getting in the game. So, I think that the Business Opportunity Assessment Program is a great vehicle for us to explore ways to engage Increased CDC in more meaningful ways. And we're going to be creative. I'm really a proponent of avoiding insanity, if you know what I mean, and not trying the same thing expecting different results. So, we're going to really approach things differently, with a different perspective, to try to get different results, to move the needle for that sweet spot population that you talked about, Ms. Barnett, in your statement. Again, those are the kinds of things that will directly and indirectly help eliminate the disparity that we think the study will find. So, everybody plays a part. Our office plays a part, the minority business community plays a part, and organizations like Increased CDC plays an important part in all correcting this and putting it back to where it should be.
Thank you. Next, I would like to call up Mr. Troy Harris. Mr. Harris, thank you so much for coming. Your name, your address, and any organization that you may represent.
My name is Troy Harris. I'm at 1455 Bryden Road here in Columbus. I'm Columbus resident. This is a learning question for me. I am currently employed by a minority business enterprise on a project with the state. I also advise and consult several MBEs and WBEs. I commend you all for your work tonight. This is a learning question for me. I am also a planning member with an LGBT Chamber of Commerce, and I'm just wondering whether or not this expanded Office of Diversity and Inclusion is being, is recognizing our minorities of sexual orientation and gender identity in terms of minority business enterprises.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Chief, what does the, what is the EEOC's guidance as it pertains to sexual orientation as a class?
Well, unfortunately, many states, well, the federal government has not recognized that particular group as a protected class, which is the legal terminology for whether you can get protections under the law for things like discrimination. But obviously, there are hate crimes and other things that protect the LGBTQ community from those types of infringements. The good news is Columbus has been, as a city, been very proactive in establishing law that goes well beyond many cities in America in protecting the rights of the LGBTQ community. In fact, the NCAA Basketball Championship has disqualified North Carolina as a state from receiving games, basketball games, because of their bathroom laws. And Columbus leaped on that opportunity, and we summarized all the various laws that the city has passed over the years, recent years, to empower and defend and liberate that community. And I think it will speak very well for our city in trying to attract those games here, luring them away from states like North Carolina, who aren't as progressive-minded in that area. I will say, though, that in terms of the disparity study and in terms of minority business, there is no legal protection that would be recognized by the federal courts that would allow us to put a goal for LGBTQ business owners. However, I have already met in the mayor's office, under leadership of the mayor, we've already met with the LGBT community and identified many of their issues. To my surprise, they have a large homeless issue for parents that kick their children out of the house, who come out and their parents are unaccommodating, saying, if you're going to choose to do that, you can't live in my household. So, there's a huge influx of teen and young adult LGBT homeless who've been kicked out of their own homes. There's also other organizations that focus on data gathering to help identify disparities in that community that they can try to address by gathering data. So, the mayor, and my office, and other parts of city government have been informed by the LGBT community on what some of the key issues are affecting them and providing barriers to opportunity for them. So, we are involved in that and supportive of that. One in particular, it was an African-American LGBT member of that roundtable who was very concerned about the fact that diverse LGBT members catch pneumonia when the majority population catches the cold. And so, the problem even in that community on race lines is far magnified in terms of disparity and inequality. So, they share some of the same issues we do in the general population, being discriminated doubly, not only for their orientation, but for their race. So, again, that was an eye-opening experience that we need to be aware of and trying to help support them in their efforts. But, you know, we're doing all we can.
Thank you, Chief. And, Mr. Harris, I look forward to working with the LGBT Chamber of Commerce as it begins its work in Columbus, and as chair of this committee, certainly would like to work hand in hand to look at opportunities to further encourage diverse spending in our community. So, thank you for the work. Next, I would like to call up Ms. Siddika White. Would you please state your address and any organization that you may represent?
My name is Siddika White. My address is 4009 Chelsea Bridge Lane, Columbus, Ohio. And I am an owner of a small business consulting firm, Siddika and Associates. I'm a recent second-time retiree from the state of Ohio Department of Development. I was Chief of the Community Services Division. I was a chief of the Community Services Division. And previous to that, I've been planning and development director for the City of Gehanna and assistant city manager in Worthington, and held several positions, including public works director in the city of Lima, Ohio. I have a couple of comments, and I'd like to say thank you, Director Francis, for your initiative. And of course, I understand Councilman Harden, Chairman, that this is a great initiative. And there's a lot that we could probably talk about with regard to that. And I just want to make a couple of points on some of the bullets. I think the name change is due at this time because I think the name will allow for greater latitude. The second bullet point says, "And workforce diversity within the City of Columbus departments, including police and fire." I would like for you to look at, external to the City of Columbus, that there be an initiative or looking at workforce diversity, particularly to your major contractors. Ms. Palmore started talking about this. This is critical. I live up in the High North End, and they're doing a great deal of street development in that area because there's going to be a huge development up at 161 and Hamilton Road. And as I travel around the city, I look at a lot of the contractors because it's just in me. And I don't see, like I do when you go to other cities, I don't see the contractors, not the subs. I don't see the contractors with the workforce diversity that reflects the work that they get in this community. So I think that that's an important area because if we're going to look at opportunities for people to even get into the line of work that they might then subsequently start their own business, this would be a great opportunity. The other thing that I would say is preference to residents to include, I didn't say that they have to be required because I know that that gets into a whole civil service issue, but you could give, like you give veterans precedent, excuse me, preference to residents in terms of when you're trying to hire people. Because often, if you looked at your workforce, you will find that a majority of your workforce does not live within the city of Columbus. So that's something in the study that you might want to look at. Another point I'd like to say is, yes, under the monitoring is critical because if you don't have a monitoring component, you're not going to be able to determine whether or not you meet those bases. Another point I'd say is, and I don't know if you've done any correlations with, the State of Ohio Department of Development Services, we have a minority business enterprise in the state, and the director, the chief, I'm sorry, his name is Jeff Johnson.
You can continue.
Okay. And Jeff Johnson would be certainly a good resource because, for the first time in the State of Ohio's history, in the 2015, 14 and 15 biennial budget, the governor, every department, because he made the same requirement, every department met their goal of 18%. And of course, he then turned around and set a higher goal for the next biennial budget. Quickly, I wanted to say, too, in terms of capacity, the opportunity within the city to link the Economic Development Department, the Human Resources Department, is critical to this. Because if this department works in isolation without economic development, the whole idea of the business development and business opportunities will be untouched, and you won't have the success. That's critical. And to that, there are so many opportunities. Because one of the things I find as a small business, that when you start talking about capacity and financial capabilities and all of those things, it precludes you from contracting with most cities because, generally speaking, the contracts, and I know we say we are unbound on them, but the contracts are just enormous. And then the other thing is, most of the people don't really know that the contract, for example, is coming up. And so with enough advance notice to even prepare or perhaps to come together with a coalition. My last point is, I would just ask, and I'll walk away on that, is that the persons that are competing for the actual diversity contract, are they all diversity businesses themselves? Or how diverse are they? Thank you very much.
Director, or Ms. Siddiqua, before you walk away, I'm going to address you as Director White because of the many hats that you've worn and just ask a question. One of your first points was about those external levers that we would have to encourage diversity. What have you seen implemented across the state that is either out of the box or pointed us in some direction? Like, what specifically do you think are some things that we could do, some levers that we could pull in the City of Columbus that would appropriately encourage that type of participation?
Well, generally speaking, it's always, you reach out and you look at a list. And we say, okay, here's the list. You have a certified list of MBEs and WBEs. And you say, okay, we certify these people. Well, then, after you certify them, what other communication do you have with them? Do you say, guess what, we have a diversity contract coming up? And especially if we categorized those consultants. And so do we have, in Columbus, a firm that potentially could have been a bidder on that? Because, one, from an economic development standpoint, if that is money given to a company internal, then in fact, we know from the economic development spinoff that there's going to be a greater return on that investment. So I'm saying those kind of linkages. But that does take more staff, and it takes concerted effort. And you think about, how do you build these linkages so that, in fact, the minority businesses do have an opportunity to, in fact, bid on them? So often, you talk to a minority business, and you say, they'll say, well, the contracts were just too big, or I didn't know about it. I'm so busy out there day-to-day doing my business that, you know, I didn't have an opportunity. Because they're not big businesses, generally speaking. So that would be one thing. The other thing is, the mayor has to mean it. The mayor has to mean it. And if the directors don't believe that the mayor means it, and nothing happens to those directors that don't meet the goal, just like if they don't, you know, stay within their budget, if nothing happens, then in fact, the attainability will be very difficult, you know, for Mr. Francis because he doesn't have the authority over another director. All he can do is go and say, do this and do that. But the directors have to implement these policies and these initiatives and be, you know, very serious about that. So those are a couple of things. I mean, I could obviously talk to you a lot more about it. Any other questions, sir?
Thank you, Ms. Siddiqua. We could have this conversation for hours, and I love to sit at your feet and learn from you and the work that you have done across the state in encouraging diversity and inclusion. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chief, would you speak to the residency preferences? That's something that I've not asked you about in terms of the study and the teeth. Is that something, just, could you speak to that, just in general?
Yes, and I just want to say that Siddiqua, you, if you weren't already employed, you would have a place on my staff. So we'll talk. But anyway, because you're singing the same song I'm singing on the several points that you made, but to respond to Chairman Harden's question, we are going to try our best to focus on the employment practices of primes. That is, we do want to take our influence outside of the walls of city government. One of the things we've already done is, on the North Market Development Project, we have piloted the requirement that developers submit an inclusion plan that focuses on, if it's a job creation bill, how many diverse folks are they going to hire for that development? If it's a structure building bill or deal, how many diverse suppliers are they going to employ? But we believe that when the disparity study kicks in and we have a goal, that we can, with much more legal authority, impose specific requirements in our incentive packages. In other words, some cities call them community benefits agreements, or CBAs, where they require that if you receive the full faith and credit of the city through tax credits, tax incremental financing, just outright revenue from the city to help you develop this thing, that you should help the city achieve its objectives and goals. And one that I'm primarily interested in is eliminating any disparity in supplier diversity and in workforce diversity. So asking them to submit or sign up with these CBAs or these inclusion plans is one way that we can send a clear message to the prime contractors that we expect you to hire folks that are local and that are diverse. One of the things we need to do to help in that local hiring is to train and skill up the local residents. I think that the Poindexter Project had that problem, the library had that potential problem. They had some local hiring requirements, and the problem was, or at least the claim was, they couldn't find any qualified skilled workers. So we're really active in promoting apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship programs. That's one of the things that Randall Sistrunk and his workforce diversity pillar are working on. How can we, and the mayor is leading this effort, by challenging the general contractors and the subcontractors to support apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship with reentry folks that are highly skilled, high work ethic, loyal, they just need an alternative way of making money? And if we can convince them that the construction trades are a viable career option, and there will be some things like incentive plans and CBAs to make sure that these developers hire you, they need to have skilled labor. So we need to eliminate that excuse that, well, we looked for folks, but we couldn't find any that were skilled or that were apprentice journeymen. And so we're going to work on that. But to your point, Ms. White, that is a problem that we want to deal with. We want to diversify the whole central Ohio region because that reflects on the city of Columbus. So we just can't focus on the city proper and not be interested in that whole public-private partnership that's going to continue to diversify the city. I think Mr. Moncrief gave me an idea to help other municipalities and organizations, even Ohio states of the world, piggyback off of our disparity study and agree to adopt the goals that our study finds because they're in the same geographic region. So why not have them sign on with some additional revenue to have that contractor study their purchasing practices? So that the whole central Ohio region can have the same goal, walk in lockstep, and empower the whole minority business community in this region. That would be very exciting to me. Another thing you talked about was Governor Kasich. And you can say what you want about him, he was zero tolerance for not meeting goals. And he's, you know, I asked Jeffrey Johnson, "How did you achieve that goal?" He said, "The mayor, the governor came in there and read the cabinet riot act and said, 'You will meet these goals, or else.'" And there was a specific "or else." And what I've been hearing Mayor Gethser say is, "You will be held personally accountable. We're developing a scorecard now, and January 10th is our first diversity committee meeting, and he will let the cabinet members know in specific detail what it means by holding them personally accountable." So I think he's very serious, and he does mean it. The strength of that statute, though, that disparity study is so important because the goal will be his hammer that he can use to really push his cabinet members towards the direction that they need to go. Again, I think the cabinet is committed. They are imposing goals voluntarily. It's just no real teeth in it right now, and we think that that disparity study will help tremendously towards guiding the path of those directors towards victory.
Thank you, Chief. And I would call our, last but certainly not least speaker this evening, Ms. Ginger Cunningham. Ms. Ginger, would you please state your address and any organization that you may represent this evening?
My name is Ginger Cunningham. I'm the owner of Ginger Cunningham and Associates. It is a consulting company which does outreach, diversity, inclusion, business development throughout Ohio. I'm also currently the president of an organization we formed about five years ago called the Diversity Compliance Coalition of Ohio. I live at 1111 Pierce Avenue, Columbus 43227. Living room's in Columbus, bedrooms in Whitehall, okay? A couple of things that you've talked about that I'm really concerned about, and I hope that you strongly implement and give power to the directors and hold their feet accountable for diversity inclusion. I used to work for EBO. I was their contract compliance investigator. One of the things I did was go out on construction sites. I would sit in on a pre-bid meeting. I would also sit in on the pre-construction meeting. And then I, along with the prevailing wage person, would randomly go out two or three times a week to the construction sites. Many a time, we found that the prime was not using the subcontractors that they said they were going to use, especially in the trucking arena, all right? You'd go on site, and there'd be different trucking companies from Lancaster or other places that weren't on the subcontracting list. Those primes have to be held accountable. And just by saying, you know, "We're going to be monitoring their expenses, the payments and so forth," is not going to get it. I personally feel that you need to have somebody go out and do an onsite periodically. You need to visualize and see what's actually going on on these sites. In addition to that, you also need the directors to really be held accountable. A lot of the director's messages only goes so far down the chain of command. A lot of city employees, over the years, through no fault of their own, they become very comfortable in the companies that they use and the companies that they select, especially in dealing with construction. They don't want to give, or they are, I don't say they don't want to give, but they very rarely give a brand-new company an opportunity to get the foot in the door and do the work. I want to commend you, Chairman Harden, and you, Chief Francis, for what you're doing. And at any time, you want to call on me and pick my brain for a lot of things that I know and I've experienced, because I'm even monitoring some stuff now, doting Portsmouth on the Portsmouth Bypass Project, because construction is not a new thing for me. Just let me know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ginger, for those comments. Chief, would you both respond to Ms. Ginger's comments, questions about onsite, like how we can strengthen our oversight? And I know that it will be strengthened once we have the legal standing of a disparity study to fall back on, but talk about, again, the monitoring and how we are... study to fall back on, but talk about, again, the monitoring and how we are currently and where you potentially see us getting to, to encourage both, because we believe that we have a great contracting community that believes in these things as well. We just want to be encouraging and make sure that they understand our expectations for diversity and inclusion. So how do we get there? And then would you give some closing comments about these changes to Title 39 and our work over the next several months to move this work ahead? Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Harden, and thank you, Ginger, for those comments. And I will call on you, as I have, for guidance and support. The monitoring, one of the things that I pledged to do when I came on board is to double the number of suppliers that are certified with my office, to increase the pool of suppliers that the departments can choose from in a variety of different goods and services. So if there's a widget that diverse suppliers don't produce, we need to find a supplier that's diverse that produces those widgets to point to an option for these departments that is viable option that they can use. And the second goal, in addition to doubling the number of certified, is to build their capacity so that they are capable of taking on larger scale work and larger projects. Now with that said, our staff has been charged with a challenge to double their efforts, to do twice as much outreach. That outreach not only involves going onsite to the businesses that we certify, to Ms. White's point, to assess their capability. What can you do? We're not just going to sign them up and certify them and put them in a file cabinet. We're going to go onsite and see how many backhoes they have, how many, you know, paving trucks they have, what is their capacity, what kind of work can they do? We're also going to, part of that unbundling initiative is forecasting projects three years down the road. So we already have from public utilities and public safety, I'm sorry, public service, three years of work that they plan. And so we're going to be regularly outreach to our businesses that are certified with us, telling them, here are the commodities that they're going to be looking for in 2017 and 2018 for this particular project. We need you to bid on this and in order to be a viable candidate with a good proposal, we need you to get in our business opportunity assessment program, get you another dump truck, get access to capital so you can be a viable candidate to get that contract. Part of that outreach is also to be out on the street, looking under the hood, monitoring and developing strong business relationships with these primes so that they know we're not just going to, you know, we're not going to be okie doke about this, we're going to hold them accountable, we're going to put them on record in terms of what they put on their bid sheet. And if that company is not being called, I've got, I've had plenty of stories about this. I've met with several of our certified who have sang the same hymn. It's like singing a Christmas carol, you know? They know it by verse. And so we're going to try to change that song. And again, the statute will help us tremendously. Now, again, I mentioned building capacity. Sometimes, and Mr. Moncrief told me about the fact that he had to diversify his business. It was hard to do, but he nearly doubled and tripled the size of his revenue just by taking that journey of diversifying and expanding his business offerings. Business owners need to be nimble and flexible and capable of adjusting their business climate to the needs of the client. So again, I'm going to try to recruit more businesses to certify in a variety of different commodities, goods and services so that we have some credible business to offer these departments to provide that good and service. Now they're used to us not having any certified minority firms in certain commodities. So they just automatically default to the folks that they're used to using. We want to change their mindset so that they have to check with our office and check with our list every time they have a project. The other thing about the diversity committee is our specialists have been charged to reach out to each department rep and have them identify a spending plan for the whole year. And again, we will take that information and feed it to our certified in terms of what projects are on the horizon. And so again, I'm going to challenge my staff to do twice as much outreach and twice as much engagement so that we can provide real time information to our certified to give them the best opportunity to get business. As a final comment, I would just say that, you know, these changes are simply to clean up a mess. Title 39 was a piece of work, a hot mess, whatever you want to call it. It was dysfunctional and it had years of neglect. Statutory provisions that had no application and it was confusing. The city attorney couldn't even figure out what law was actually the current law that we were following. So I was very frustrated that we needed to clean the slate and put some law in there that I could clearly follow and enforce. So this is just a baseline revision to give us a working statute that we can really understand. And we're going to build upon it, so this is not the end of the story. What you see in these proposed changes is just cleaning it up and making it capable of having a good foundation to build on so that we can get this statute where we need it to be to advance the needs of our supplier community.
Thank you, Chief. I agree to take one more speaker's slip. Are you sure? All right. But well, thank you, Ms. Airley, for being here this evening. I guess I'll add just on to your final thoughts. I've been chair of this committee for two years now, end of two years. Had the pleasure of working with you, Chief, for this, your first year as chief diversity officer. Learned a lot the first year and I believe that this second year is when we started to really dive deep and try to move the ball forward. Ms. Siddiqua White spoke about for real changes needing to happen, there has to be a commitment from the top. And one of the things I've been most proud of Mayor Gunther for is real leadership in this area. I remember our very first conversation last year about a disparity study. He was serious and coming from the city, I knew that there were challenges, I knew that everybody didn't love them. And for Mayor Gunther to unequivocally say that if this is what the community believes is, we'll help with our inclusion, our diversity and establishing numbers and that's where we'll go. And then to follow up with real action to get us there in months, not in a year, has been something I've been very proud of. But he has a partner in that. Council will have that same type of oversight as we have our budget hearings over the next month. There will not be a budget hearing that I participate in nor several of my colleagues that we will not ask the same questions of all the directors of all the departments about their ability to engage a diverse community as we spend our city dollars. We will do this before and up to we get our disparity study. So we're not just going to wait to move forward. And so like Director, or like Chief Francis said, the changes to Title 39 are just the beginning. It is to clean up our language and to give us a base level to move forward from. And so certainly want to thank everyone who participated in this public hearing this evening. The turnout on a rainy, cold November evening shows our interest and shows our commitment as a city to diversity and to inclusion and it makes me very proud. We will be moving this legislation on December 12th for second reading. Would certainly encourage folks who are supportive of this to come down and to speak in favor of this legislation. My colleagues have been briefed and I'm certainly going to encourage them to support this legislation to move it forward and to pass it. Want to thank my staff, Zach Davison, Alex, Ms. Linda, all the folks at ODI, Thomas Stevens, for your deep dive work with my team on this legislation and preparing for this evening. Thank CTV for making this presentation live this evening. And thank the citizens of Columbus for entrusting us with this responsibility to make sure that this really is the best city in the country to do work. Thank you. With that, we'll conclude the public hearing.